Calling meeting in order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Enjoying the beautiful weather? Roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
I'm here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
All right, we're all here. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. Add 1E, the St. Clair County Road Commission work order for the Bayview culvert replacement. Support. Motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. It's 1E. All right, we have bills payable. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to change the bills payable for...
You can just pay them.
May 7, Thursday.
For $139,732.72.
Support. Okay, motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine. Yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, next was supervisors' report. Been a couple of weeks now, we had our State of the Community address and talked to everybody. I thought it was a pretty good event and we'll be doing it again, I'm sure. It was put on by the Elgnac, or no, the Anchor Bay Chamber of Commerce. But it was well intended. Been working with Midstates who won the bid for the park on the playground project. And trying to finalize the stages. They're going to start replacing the playground equipment, probably looking in the beginning of August. But we're still looking at finalizing when they're going to get all the equipment needed that's on order. But hopefully it'll be the first week of August. Sewer lining rehab project. We were going to open up the bid a couple of days ago, but had two contractors actually request if we delayed it a couple of weeks. And we looked at it and we granted that and made addendum to the bid because they just needed more time to go through all the data and get for their quote. So that we're going to open it May 14th then, which is what, next week? Paving on Fruit Road, Cemetery Road, and Stone Road between High and Sword Out. The overlayment's done. They are, the contractor's going to be coming back this next week and finishing up with approaches for the driveways. Some of them weren't done. I was hoping they would be here today, but that didn't happen. They're supposed to come back this week and finish primarily the one with stone driveways and finish that part of the job. Last week I had an opportunity to speak on behalf of Senate Bill 700 submitted by Kevin, our Senator Kevin Hertel. And that bill is concerned with allowing a second DDA in a municipality if the municipality is separated by body of water. And it went very well. The intention would be, once this passed, we'd be able to have a second DDA district over in San Souci on the island. They're probably going to vote on it next week, the following week, and then after that goes to the House. And with a little bit of luck, they are saying that it would probably clear our way some, you know, towards the end of the summer. So at that point then, we have to start working and defining it and establishing the DDA. So that usually takes about four to six months, once that's done. So hopefully, you know, this winter or something, we'll have a, be able to start a DDA over in San Souci area. But it went very well, actually. So at the MTA conference the week before up in Traverse City, the Michigan Township Association. It was a good conference, as always. I did have initial conversations with DTE who is interested in partnering with us for the LG water treatment plant over on the island. I do have an informal meeting with them Friday up in Port Huron. So hopefully then we can start setting some granular meetings up. We'll be going out for bids soon for the mobile stage and outdoor exercise equipment and other park upgrades. As you recall, we're receiving $125,000 for the stage and $176,000 for the outdoor exercise equipment and other park upgrades from the county from their ARPA funds. And hopefully I can get those bid documents ready to go here in the next week or two to get them out for bid. But we know we got to do that under the Build Back Better requirements and it's a chore. So finalizing the bid documents for our water main replacement project. We did receive the permit from MDOT. So it's just a matter of putting that book together and having it come before us and prove it and go out to bid. Starting to work on our, or starting, or starting, and we're working on union negotiations with our fire union, MAFF. Working on several projects stemming from the ARPA Fund Workshop. And I'm in full budget mode, trying to bang out our budgets for our following year, too. Cleanup weekend is May 18th on the mainland and the island, then on Harson's Island is May 19th also, extra day over there. The St. John's Marsh Cleanup is May 11th, starting at 9:00 a.m. And then also, May 11th is our Clay Day celebration along with American Indian Pow Wow. And the dancing starts at noon. I know the vendors, we're going, hopefully, they're saying we're going to have a lot of Indian vendors there and they're going to start their selling at 10:00 a.m. And then San Souci Block Party, May 18th, starts at 5:00 p.m. downtown San Souci, where we have three bands on two different stages. It'll probably go from 5:00 till 11:30-ish that evening. So that's my supervisors' report. All right, where are we moving along? Public comments, please. Any public comments?
Christine Holcomb, 1202 Gore Drive, Harson's Island. Here on behalf of SS Downtown Inc. Just wanted to let you all know that we do have plans for a road rally on the island on June 8th. Going to begin at approximately 9:00, 9:20 at the San Souci Bar. There will be an option for people to also have breakfast that day at the bar before going out. Excuse me, breakfast buffet bar. We've talked with Chief Coke and Chief Rose that we're planning this for safety on the roads and that all the vehicles that will be participating are required to be street legal. And it's not a timed event, so there shouldn't be any racing to get it done. But I have some flyers I'd like to give each of you. And then we'd ask if you would allow us to place some flyers on the table or possibly put it on your website.
Can you send it digitally to us?
Yeah, we can do that.
And we can put it out.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. You're next.
I'm next. Cindy Pilato on behalf of SS Downtown Inc. as well. And I am actually, thank you, Artie. We had an opportunity to meet with Artie last week. And I think all of the board was copied on a recap of that meeting with respect to the San Souci sign that we are all working together on. We just wanted to confirm that our commitment to the township is 50% of the cost of the sign. And we're hoping to be able to have those funds in your hand probably sometime in late June, mid to late June. Also, we wanted, we were, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to even discuss yet the, our proposal to be, to work directly with Phillips in respect to tweaking the finalization of the design of the sign. Then of course to, it would then have come to you guys for the final, the final write-off. And then I know it's, you know, part of what you guys are trying to accomplish is to get these, get this taken care of and get these ARPA funds spent. So the sooner we can get a go-ahead to work with Phillips and we, you know, Phillips can be notified, we can certainly get this, get this wrapped up pretty quickly so that we can get the sign ordered. And then in respect to the, you know, obviously, originally you guys had budgeted for those, all those ARPA funds to go to this sign. I think it was somewhere between $11,000 and $12,000. I don't have the exact figures. But with us now contributing 50% of that, that leaves some additional ARPA funds that have to be allocated. I'm assuming someplace. So I'm hoping that you'll look at someplace to potentially spend that on the island as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it possible, sorry, with the road rally, can they get a table or something, Clay Days to promote maybe?
Yeah, we, maybe.
I say maybe you could have a table.
Let's not do that here.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none. That's why I wanted a digital for that. Consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the minutes of April 15th, 2024. The notice of a soil removal public hearing on 5/20/24 that we have to set later in this meeting. Reports. Board approved April payroll and communication. A thank you from the council on aging.
Okay, motion of support. I did want to mention, I received a really nice thank you letter from the Elgnac Clay Historical Society, but it's on my desk and I didn't get it in the packet. So that will be in next, in next meeting's packet. Any other discussion?
I was, on the board member comments, I listened to the meeting. I noticed that Cindy mentioned to Judy that she didn't need to come back anymore on the opt-out. So I thought maybe that should be.
No, what I said was that we weren't voting on it annually. It wasn't something that got voted on annually.
I just wanted that added to the board comments.
I don't do any of the board comments.
Who does that?
I don't list any of the board comments.
Oh, okay, because you have in the past, okay.
Any more comments?
Chris's PSA has got too long.
That's true. That's true. And they're not going to slow down either.
Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay.
On the payroll.
Motion carries. Fire chief report. How we doing, George?
Good evening. Fire chiefs report for April 2024. During the month of April, I attended two meetings. The St. Clair Flats Homeowners Association on Harson's Island and the St. Clair County Chiefs Association. General business was discussed. During the month, Fire Cat came and tested all our hose and our ladders. So everything tested out great. We only lost two sections of hose due to age, so we'll get those replaced. Fireboat one was placed into service for water calls and outer island responses and ready to go. Fireboat two, the tanks have been tested and lacking gas caps have been installed on them. We're just waiting for the graphics to be installed and hopefully within the next week or so, we should have that done. I'm working on a port security grant. Had a meeting with them. Gave them information about our area and our demographics. Hopefully we have a good chance of getting a grant for a new fireboat. I also attended a Zoom meeting, too, which kind of helped clear up some gray areas and get us some, some areas that we need to get more information. And hopefully that helps us out. Next month is cleanup, May 18th. We take oil-based paint. We don't take any latex paint. You can take and pop the lid, put kitty litter in it, let it solidify, and put it out for trash.
All right, any questions for George?
Hey, chief, on the bills payable, the one that we approved. We have an invoice from West Shore Fire for Engine Two, a master stream repair. It's $1,400 bucks.
Yeah, that was.
Can you elaborate on that? Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, there was, the, would not rotate in the up or down. And they had to come out and repair it.
So not, not a warrantable item?
No. Truck's what, two years old? And it would not be covered under warranty.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, under new business, we have Resolution 2024-10, charitable gaming license for SS Downtown Inc. Think we're going to have to pass one of these for each of our service groups that does fund raising. I'll entertain a motion.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-10, the charitable gaming license for SS Downtown Inc.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, we have motion and lots of support. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine. Yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
The motion passes. Next we have our, set the public hearing for our soil removal permits.
You can do that at the car rally.
For May 20th, 2024, 6:00 p.m.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for soil removal permits for May 20th, 2024 at 6:00 p.m.
It's going to be on Harson's Island lines, right?
Yes.
Support. Okay, we should show that. Motion in support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have DPW water meter purchase. Lance. And they gone up.
Yes, they have.
How many total do we need?
There's 854 needed in order to do the existing one-inch services.
Think we can get a little better sweet spot if we pump the quality?
I tried.
Beat them up.
I tried. They won't go any lower than 405 each.
Okay.
Lance, do you know when, when you say they started at $291.60 approximately? Can you put a time period on that?
That's when we first started the project back in 2020.
About four years ago?
Yeah.
Four years. So in four years, they've jumped that much?
Yes.
Have you bought any one-inch meters within the last two years, Lance?
Yes, they were three, 383, I think it was.
383.
50% in four years.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
I'm kind of confused. So a total of 854 are needed. It doesn't include the water main project on Point Trumbull. So does that, 854 minus the 400, does that include the Point Trumbull or is there even more?
No, Point Trumbull's going to be an existing 283 meters.
So it'll be 854 plus another 283?
Correct.
Gotcha.
And those will all be one-inch?
Yes.
In the new project?
Yes.
Just trying to do it a little bit at a time, so get 400 now, 450 later, and then 283, is that what you're thinking?
We can do more. It's just.
I just wondered if there was a, you know.
That's what we're kind of thinking.
If they keep going up, you know. I don't know.
It's going up more than inflation.
Well, the problem is they're increasing pretty quickly.
Yes.
Well, it's averaging 12.5% a year, right?
I tried to get a knock-down time on when these would come in.
Yes.
And he's telling me November. So it could probably be put into next year's budget.
It will be.
I would say that we should probably order what we need if we know that. I mean, even just the 30 meters or the 400 meters saving $30 is $13,000, so.
Yep.
I mean, we're talking quite a bit of money there just to make sure, I mean, it's, we know we're going to use them.
We need 1,137 when I do the math. So that's another 737, not just 400.
Correct.
Is there any more? That's it?
Well, just existent, any new services that we put in at that point in time.
Right, but that takes care of the new projects.
Yeah, I did 1,150.
What'd you say it's on the riverfront? How many?
283.
You think if we order 1,150, they might give us a break?
No. They were not.
I mean, getting over 1,000 versus 800.
Well, I, I put it right in the letter. You can see, I says, Mark, what if I, you know, if I buy 100 or 300 or 500 or 700 or 1,000, is it the same price?
He only gave you the break after three, so.
Correct.
And there's no one else to get a bid from?
No, Cam Strip's the only, they're just one business. And there's only one distributor that has them.
You don't think you can beat them up anymore, huh?
I'll try.
If, if we were to order a larger quantity?
Like I say, you know, you see the email that I gave them.
Yeah, but it might not hurt to give them a call and talk to them.
I can do it again.
Well, one to 300 is 435 and 300 up is 405. Maybe there's another.
Price break?
Price break there. You go off another. Board, what if we, what if we gave them a blanket approval not to exceed amount? To cover exactly what we think right now that he needs.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed amount. And then we let him go back to the bargaining table. And if he's successful, well then, great. That's more money in the water fund. But if he's not successful, then at least he has the purchasing power to pull the.
Do you want to do 1,137, but that doesn't cover new services? You want to do 1,150?
I was going to do 1,150, but I'm confused. Is it 435 or is it 405?
405. It's 405. 300 and up is 405.
Oh, okay. Oh, 300 and up, I didn't see that on the email, okay.
I mean, when they give you a break after 300, you would think after 600, 700, or 800, they'd give you another break of some sort.
And you could say, maybe say something like, we only have so many ARPA funds. I don't know if ARPA funds qualify.
No, not for this.
Give them that kind of thing now.
But I mean.
So I know there's a warranty, Lance, on these meters. If you were to purchase and they sat on the, when does the warranty begin? Does it begin once it's put in service or is it from the date of purchase?
I think it's date of purchase.
And if you ordered these said 1,150 meters, do you think you would get a single shipment? Or would they have to manufacture and perhaps stage deliveries?
He was talking about possibly having some in stock again. Like I called him again today and I says, hey, I kind of need this for the meeting tonight. And he never called me back. I'd like to know if they have any in stock. They're supposed to be shipping all this stuff from Denmark and they're supposed to have a spot here in the States, down in Georgia, where they're going to keep it and then distribute it from there. But I don't know if they've been getting good shipments or not. Nobody will answer my questions.
Couldn't you ask if, well, we can do it on a subscription.
That's the other issue, they come from Denmark.
Where they, every 30 days, we get something in. At that time, do we be able to keep up on the warranty on a subscription? You know, so if we get, you know, initial 300 and a month later, we get, you know, 50 or 100 or whatever, whatever you need at that point in time.
What I'd like to do is I'd like to actually start on Harson's Island in the back country here and start hitting all the one-inch services. I've got 37 one-inch left. Problem being, I've got a couple of services hanging and we've got some repairs we got to do on the other ones. But I will eat those 37 up in no time.
So at the rate that you're putting them in now, how long would it take you to install all 800 of those?
Probably a month and a half.
800 meters in a month and a half? Oh, wow.
Because we're going to do it on regular time, too. We're not doing it just after hours.
Okay.
I had two teams going out.
I guess, I guess warranty isn't an issue.
Yeah, that is not, right.
Well, it's 465,750 for 1,150 of them at 405. If you could get them down to 425 grand, then that costs us 370 apiece instead of 405.
I'll give it my best shot.
Maybe try that, you know.
So that's what I was saying, too.
10%.
If we did not to exceed.
Yeah.
Not to exceed 466,000.
Someone want to make a motion?
Can we just check that math before you make the motion?
I got 465,750 for 1,150 of them.
You got the same.
Yeah, so I said, I upped it to 466,000.
And 1,150?
1,150.
Minus 854.
Times 405, because we need, not 854, 1,150 is the amount of them.
465,750, is that what you have?
Yeah. 465,750, so I said 466,000.
For 854 now, right?
It's 854, but he needs another 283. So he really needs 1,137, already upped it to 1,150.
So that's what I'm getting at, I'm reverse mathing this, so it's leaving him 13 extra ones?
Yeah.
How many new services annually are we averaging right now? Could you, could you wager a guess at that?
I think we put like 23 in last year.
And you're doing all one-inch now, right?
Yeah. Yeah, everything's one-inch now.
Yeah, he could, I mean, he might have a seven-month lead time on this thing.
And the other thing I'm doing, too, now, mind you, the 283 for the riverfront that we bought 3/4 for, I'm going to, I'm selling them back.
Yes.
But I haven't seen an amount of money yet. I told them at least what we paid for them, but I'm trying to make some money on that, too.
Do you have room for 1,200 meters?
Yes.
So now, why do we have to change out every one of these one-inch? What's the reason of having to change them all out?
New services.
Because these are all the new radio read ones. We don't go out and read meters anymore. It actually broadcasts the radio. The antennas pick it up and it comes to the computer at the shop.
Meter change-out program was approved about four years ago.
But we've still been having to go out and read it because.
Certain sections.
They're all out there.
Ones that we don't, haven't changed out yet, correct.
So who goes out and reads them if we don't read them?
We do.
Oh, right, but you're trying to avoid that.
Correct.
And it's real-time data, right? So if somebody were to spring a tremendous leak, like you know about it.
Yes.
Or have the ability.
24-hour period. It blows a flag up, jury checks it every morning, and we call the homeowner.
It's already saved a lot.
That's the benefit. That's, that's huge.
Yes.
So how many have been changed out to this point? Like, I'm just curious.
We're right around, I want to say 2,400, I think.
I think, I think it's in the 3,000s.
Is it 3,000 now? Rob's been doing it daily, so.
Two-thirds or more. Two-thirds to three-quarters done.
We've got just under 5,000 services to do, so.
All right, we need a logical quantity purchase.
1,200.
1,200?
Well, 405, that's 486.
Yep, not to exceed, right?
Yeah, that's what I got. Long math, the old-fashioned way.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a.
I'll make a motion to approve the Water Department to purchase water meters for an amount not to exceed 486,000. Contingent on Lance, following up, trying to beat them up for a better price at that quantity.
You got, you have 1,200 as the quantity too, right?
Uh, 1,200 meters, if that's what comes out to you.
Yes. Support.
Okay, we have a motion, we're gonna purchase 1,200 meters with, for a price not to exceed $486,000. And it'll probably, it'll definitely be in next year's budget.
I was just gonna say, is the money there for it? We got the money for it?
And verify the lead time.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd go for 10% off.
Everybody understand the motion?
If I can go more than that, we'll see.
Yep.
Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
All right, next we have DPW copper press tool for $3,257 coming out of line, item 744, from both water and sewer funds. Can you explain to us, Chris, everyone, what, what this tool is used for?
What it's used for is putting copper pipe together and doing any plumbing without having a torch, solder, or anything. It's a crimp-style fitting that has a little o-ring on the inside of it. So when I go into a residence, I don't have to worry about catching anything on fire. It's a good thing. Having any leaks. Yeah.
I've seen them used.
Yeah. It, it's, it's a real nice unit, it really is.
Did you pick the one with, because of the lowest price or did you think that's the best one to get?
Actually, Milwaukee makes about the best one out there. I talked to a couple of local plumbers too that have them and they kind of recommended the Milwaukee.
So you only priced the Milwaukee, you didn't price any other brand?
Correct.
It looks like you got two Milwaukies in here.
Well, the supply house is a Milwaukee too.
There's three quotes.
Okay.
Milwaukee, and Milwaukee's the only other one that actually goes bigger than two-inch. I can buy Jaws to go to four-inch.
Do you need anything bigger than two-inch?
No, not, not that I've seen so far, but it is available. I can go three-inch and I can go four-inch.
You think we should try any other brands or, I mean, just try a Milwaukee?
I'm just going by.
Recommendation?
Local plumbers. I mean, they, they use it on a daily basis, that's the only reason I'm saying that.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of a copper press toolkit in the amount of $3,257.10 plus $33 for shipping, be paid out of line, item number 590744 and 591744.
Support.
Yeah, motion in support. Any more discussion?
How often you use it? Pretty, quite often?
It's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be. We've been doing it now with solder, so it takes, it takes quite a while and if the pipe's got any water in it, you gotta get the pipe dry first. Yeah. This unit, one reason, Clint Vilwalk is a plumber on the island and he actually went up into Cotterville, they had a leak and they couldn't solder it, couldn't do anything to it. He was able to open the valve up, put it on, press it, close the valve and it solved the problem. So even the valve wouldn't work, he was able to make it work. So that's one nice part about having a presses compared to soldering it.
You don't have to take the water out of the line.
You don't have to take the water out of it.
Kind of pricey, but if you're gonna use it weekly, it's gonna get.
Mm-hmm.
Lance, you guys have other Milwaukee stuff down there too, don't you?
Yes. Yeah, 18 volt, same, same battery, everything, I got a sawzall, like, we've got drill drivers, all that.
So you could use this in meter pits too, correct?
Yes, sir.
So you're gonna use it a lot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Guys, and I, I don't mean to be forward and push this through, but Milwaukee's like the, the pros tool.
Yep.
Okay, it's just, it's just a given. It's, it's what plumbers go to, it's, it's one of their faves. It's not the cheapest, but it's probably the best.
Milwaukee also makes most of your snap-on tools.
Yeah.
Entertaining motion?
We do have motion, answer.
Oh, we do?
Yep.
Okay, uh. Being said, uh, for, to purchase the copper press tool, Milwaukee, $3,257.
All in favor?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we amended, I got, actually received this today and so happens I had someone down there calling me about it today too. Uh, this is a work order for the St. Clair County Road to do design and permitting for the culvert replacement on Bayview Shores. And it's $6,000 total. I actually requested for them to, to, to work this up because, um, once they get the permit from Eagle, is they can give us a, a better estimate of how much the price would be to replace that.
There's no match money on culverts, are there?
No. Well, there, there, there could be, I mean, they may let us use our road match for this. They may, I don't know. Um, depending on how much it is. I'll tell you, if Eagle would allow us to put two tubes, large tubes in versus, you know, um, it would save us a whole lot of money. I don't know if they would be willing to do that or not, I, I think that's the direction they're gonna try to go with.
Which direction, two tubes?
What's that?
Two tubes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As you recall, the other one that did go, it was kind of an emergency fix. We, we passed it together with one lane. Uh, it was during the high water and, um, um, same road, was it 150, not even 100 yards apart? So it's a given that this one's not in too good a shape, so I've been kind of nervous about it. And I sure hate to have that go and then have to wait for an Eagle permit and everything else to get approved to, to, uh, to, to fix it. And this is the only way on and off for those people down at, those couple roads.
I agree with you. And this is, this is a match, 6,000, we pay the six and they pay six or is we pay 3,000?
We pay, no, it's 6,000.
And they pay six. So really, it's gonna be 12,000 for the survey, design and permitting, is that right? Am I understanding that right?
No.
No.
It's 6,000.
We pay for it.
Oh, there's no match on it?
There's no match.
I heard you say match.
For the actual project, we're hoping maybe they would let us use some match money for roads, but.
Got it, okay.
We won't know until we see what the cost is.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the St. Clair County Road Commission work order for Bayview Shores Drive Road Culvert in the amount of $6,000.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes, okay, motion passes. All right, next we have board member comments. Cindy, what do you have for us?
Um, I don't believe at this time I have anything, thank you.
Okay. Mark?
Planning Commission is on April 22nd, I believe. They're not having agenda yet, but that's worth coming. A few other items that came from the Planning Commission to the board are now going back to the Planning Commission and I'll, uh, con, convey with, that with Kathy later on, who we can do with that. And I also talked to Artie today about some drainage issues, uh, on the side roads, ditching and so on and so forth, so hopefully you'll have St. Clair County take a look at those and see what we can do. Thank you.
Maureen?
Looking forward to seeing everybody at Clay Days.
Yeah.
They said maybe we can get you a table, so.
John?
Oh, I don't have anything tonight.
Chris?
Yeah, can we hit the, the dates real quick again? We, we got the marsh cleanup this Saturday, right?
Yep, uh, May 11th and that starts at 9:00 a.m.
Can we just meet down at the DNR launch?
Yeah, this, yes.
Yep, and then kind of gather and take assignments from there, right?
Exactly.
And then the following weekend, we have both the mainland and Harson's Island cleanup.
Cleanup.
That starts on Saturdays?
Saturday. Elgin Act's doing there is also on Saturday.
And so where's our, our mainland hub is DPW?
Yeah.
And our mainland, or Harson's Island hub is Brownsville. And then Brownsville goes for two days, it's Saturday and Sunday, right?
Eight to four.
Okay, and then we've got, um, Clay Days?
Yep, May 11th, starts at noon.
We've got the road rally coming up.
The road rally, we got the San Francisco Block Party.
Block Party is.
May 18th.
Ooh, there's a lot of dates to keep track of.
Starts at 5.
Tancin' in the Street.
Awesome, I just wanted a quick recap.
Will be dancing in the streets.
Mother's Day's coming? Forget that.
Yeah, Mother's Day, don't forget your Mother's Day.
Yeah, I think they're gonna be selling flowers out here, right? The wrestling.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, you.
You're stealing our thunder?
And then to wrap it up, um, most of the tree budding is done, right? So that means everybody's gutters is full of crap. Like, it's full, like, it usually gets falling over unless you've got gutter guards.[1560.07]